Call this meeting to order. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any other changes to the agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
On my favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Open forum, if anybody would like to speak. All right. Approval of the minutes, bills, purchase orders, approval of the investments, a street worker step increase, and then we had a few donation resolutions. There was Resolution Number 2023-58 from Selena Hector for an amount of $1,000 to the Melrose Fire Department. Resolution Number 2023-59, a donation from the Holding Ford Fire Relief in an amount of $500 to the Melrose Ambulance Department. Number three, Resolution 2023-60, a donation of the, from the Melrose American Legion Post 101 in amount of $500 for the Melrose Area Chamber of Congress towards a Deuces Wild Scholarship. Resolution Number 2023-61, a donation from Walmart, amount of $100 towards the Melrose Fire Department ambulance station TV. And then Resolution Number 2023-64, donation of $500 for the Melrose American Legion Post 101 towards fireworks for the holiday kickoff. Then there's a pay app number one. Then there's a gambling resolution. Can I get a motion to approve?
Subtle.
On my favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. All right, 5:00 a. introduction of a police officer, Adam Schmidt, to be sworn in tonight. So if we can just push the chairs out of the way and make this painless, easiest part of your job you'll ever have.
Right.
All right, raise your right hand. I, Adam Schmidt.
I, Adam Schmidt.
Have been duly appointed as police officer for the city of Melrose.
Have been duly appointed as police officer for the city of Melrose.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And do solemnly swear.
And do solemnly swear.
I will defend.
I will defend.
Enforce.
Enforce.
And obey.
And obey.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The state of Minnesota.
The state of Minnesota.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Melrose.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Melrose.
That I will obey the orders.
That I will obey the orders.
Lawfully of the superior officers.
Lawfully of the superior officers.
And the regulations of the Melrose Police Department.
And the regulations of the Melrose Police Department.
That I will protect the rights.
That I will protect the rights.
The lives.
The lives.
The property.
The property.
Of all citizens.
Of all citizens.
And uphold the honor.
And uphold the honor.
The police profession.
Of the police profession.
With my life.
With my life.
If in need.
If in need.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Adam. Glad you're part of the team. Before we take pictures, I need two autographs on here for you. All right. And if your family would like to come up and take pictures with you. Ow! Now we're washing.
I'm gonna go over by Katie, okay?
Sorry.
And again, I just want to say, Adam, thank you so much. You do a very vital part of our community. Also, before being on the Police Department, you have been a firefighter for the city of Melrose for how many years is it now?
I will do 10.
10. Yes. And before this, you were a dispatcher at Sterns County, which we heard you quite a bit, and you did an awesome job at that, too. So thank you for everything you do to give back to our communities for the safety of its people. Thank you very much, and we're glad you're part of the team.
Absolutely, happy to be here.
Thank you. All right, we are on to reports. Chief Mouse.
Good evening. September 2023, numbers in our traffic area, seven citations, twenty-five verbal warnings, no written warnings. For 2023, we had 180 calls and requests for service last year, it was 375. In 2022, we ended on ICR 2670, and this year was 2147. We had 21, or excuse me, 23 agency assists calls per month. We seem to be hovering close to that low 20, instead of the low 30s in the last couple months, which is okay. So we're down a few calls from last year, but with the number of people we've had working, I'm happy that we're not staying at that level, and both of them are even further. A couple things for the public, anyway. Winter parking is gonna be coming up here November 1st through April 1st. In our downtown business district, Gary, they were heating the signs today already. I saw Bill and Brent out there doing that. So from 3:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., no parking in our downtown areas, but everything being cleaned up before people start coming in to work. And the city gets really busy, and then side streets are still 24-hour parking, so keep an eye on that, so we don't have big moments of snow, and the group can get around and get things cleaned up as quickly as possible. Update on a squad car. We do have some positive news. We can get two cars in 2024, because they will not build 23 cars anymore because of the strike. So, we will be ordering two cars. Hopefully this week, they're planning on opening up the order bay. We did a good a quote on a Dodge Durango. They don't make cars anymore, neither do the manufacturers, so a Dodge Durango, Chevy Tahoe, which is bigger, so we're looking at the Durango or the police interceptor Explorer that we currently have. We would like to stay with Ford, and so everything's consistent and fleet, as far as tires and oil and all that sort of stuff. But, we'll take a look at the price, and we'll get back with all those sorts of things, but we do have a few little sub-mess in the four. Get in the line, and hopefully, two French cars come in all on the same day, and we'll soon begin to care. It's over there.
Is there any questions? Thank you, chief, appreciate it. City Attorney Report, Mr. Scott.
Most of these are catch-up items. I think we really actually discussed these last meeting. We had some final tweaks on the documents with Riverside Flats, and that's been completed. We also then were putting the final touches on the new billing service with the, for the ambulance department. And then finally, we got a request for information that had to do with the grant we got from the DNR for the, for the whole project. And normally, it's just handled. This one was a little different, you know, looking at the, at the grant to see if there was anything that would qualify as confidential or not public. The DNR actually has language in here, and apparently they get lots of these requests. It says, you know, if you get any requests, the city agrees to forward it to the DNR, and they'll handle it, which is. We did. A little unusual, but it was kind of nice to be able to just pass it off to the DNR and tell them a little of this. I don't know what the interest was, given one of the DNR wants to hang out in these things in-house, but. That's all I've got, just questions or concerns?
Thank you, Scott. Community Development Director.
The QuickTrip store framing should begin next Monday, so we should start seeing that. Riverside Flats next door does have their parking garage poured. The exterior framing is just finishing up, so now all the work starts to move inside, so it's gonna become slightly less dramatic than what we have seen in terms of changes every day to the site. If you have an opportunity, I invite you to take Pickville and go check out Granite City's multifamily development out on Railroad. The footings are in, the brick is laid for the foundation of the main building, the garage slabs are poured, and they are constructing their elevator shaft right now. So there's a lot of work being done out there. There's exciting developments on and along Main Street, with some small businesses opening and others making improvements to their businesses. The first two commercial rehabilitation deferred loan program projects are finished. We will be issuing checks this week to them. We have additional applications that are being completed right now, so we're very excited about that project for the small businesses. We're starting to look ahead to 2024 and projects we are anticipating, including Railroad Avenue and the reconstruction of Main Street. There are also businesses already planning projects, and we are starting to meet with them about building for next year already. So we do not expect the pace that we are at to slow down at all next year. And we are actively reaching out to businesses and developers about making plans, asking to partner with them, and to look for opportunities for growth and improvement. We just finished up the third quarter, and our building permits are 255 permits totaling And that was as of last week, and so we have a few more cents then. And also, we have a comprehensive plan, public workshop plan, for this Thursday night, and I really want to encourage people to come out to that. It starts at 6:00. This document, the comprehensive plan, is gonna guide the actions of the council, the Melrose Area Development Authority, Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Park Board for the next 20 years. So we really want the public to come out and give their input and share their thoughts on businesses, housing, parks, trails, everything like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. City Engineer Report, Mr. Bummel.
All right, good evening. Couple items for you guys tonight. Update on 2023 construction. Project is nearly complete. Contractor's working on the punch list, last few items out there. One thing you have noticed is the sidewalk that is being formed for the new curb ramps along Craft Drive and Route 13. We complete it either tomorrow afternoon or Wednesday morning, according to the contractor's schedule. 2024 street project, Gary and I were able to walk a good portion of Main Street West for all of the project, look at the curb to see what we could try to save to cut the cost of the night out a little bit. And there's some of what we can save, it's gonna be dependent upon where those sewer services land, whether or not we can actually save the curb. So, of course, the curb in the best conditions will be right up at the sewer service, which is that one, too. Just the way it works. So we're gonna try to save as much as we can, but it all depends on where those sewer services lie, and what we can determine. Right now, your estimates include 100% curb removal. So hopefully, we can back those odds before overtime. Railroad Avenue project, some excitement out there. For the first time I've ever heard of, there we found a granite shell near our sanitary sewer. We may have an email about that to give you an update. Yeah, so they blasted that thing Friday afternoon, about 4:30. Happy to report that the contractor did a nice job with it. They had a seismograph set up at the nearest home that recorded less than 50% of the wall of vibration that could have been. So, they did their job. We'll find lots of fire hydrants out there, the crews are back in digging up there, blasting it tomorrow. Ultra-thin bonded wear course, you guys have driven Railroad Avenue, 8th Street, or 12th will look great. But I'll say that was a nice project. Sure turned out good, and we'll see how it lasts. But, it's a pretty tough one compared to some of the other things we've seen happen in some of the worst. Questions for me?
Question for you. Only reason why I'm asking is because I was, yeah. At the fire station, there is some concrete that needs to be poured?
Okay.
Do you know when that's gonna get done? Because I tripped going into the building, was it last week, when we had a call? So I was just wondering if they're gonna get that done before it freezes?
At the fire station?
Yeah.
Boyning is doing that, so he was gonna get it at this fall, but haven't heard back from him since, you know, I talked to him to do the basketball court, and he was gonna get it at this fall.
Okay. All right. I'm just wondering, because I looked pretty funny laying on the ground next to some concrete.
Glad you're in.
Okay, good deal. All right. Any other questions? All right, thanks. City Administrator Report.
So a couple of public utilities updates. The wastewater treatment facility, and I believe we have talked about this numerous times, and I always say, we're really close, we're really close. Well, I can honestly say, I think we are really close now. JWC, which is the screen company, will be on-site tomorrow and the next day. They have to repair an auger, they have to do several other things. We're having, we're having issues with the screens, the automatic wash screens, and we're just trying to get that resolved. So, we'll be working with them, along with the, along with Magni. Their general will be out there to work through that. So hopefully, once we get that part of it done, we are waiting on a couple other things, but we're not gonna include them. We're just gonna kind of wrap everything up and then have Magni come back and install a new Oz pump when it's ready, because right now it's 13 weeks out, so that's kind of where we're at with that. We have now heard back from WSB for the RDB. You received a memo in your packet regarding the dam. The final piece of this project is the lomar, not the colmar. It's actually the letter of map provision, which is a FEMA request. They sent, they sent a whole bunch of hoops that they're expecting us to jump through. I talked to WSB today, and they said that everything they're asking for, they already have the information, it's not, it won't be an issue. And that's kind of where we're at. The problem is, is FEMA has no timeframe, so, you know, it could be a year. Sometimes these projects take close to a year to get approval. So, I'm gonna talk to Mike Decker at the county, and we're gonna release a majority of the, of the retainage for this project, but we might just keep a little bit, not, not very much. But I think we're very close to getting this one closed off as well. We interviewed on Tuesday, October 17th, for the Director of Electric Operations, and there were two potential candidates. No decisions have been made at this time. That's kind of where we're at. And then, the last thing I'm gonna ask of, of the council, is that we have a joint session with the Public Utilities Commission. The salary survey from the League of Minnesota Cities has been released. This is a good benchmark of communities to measure where they are at with salary and benefits. In the next year, we are going to be faced with at least two, if not three or more retirements, negotiation of union contracts, pay equity, and bids for health insurance. As staff, we want to make sure that we're moving forward in the right direction, and that we are not only, that we, that we have the support of the council and the PUC as we move forward. So, with that in mind, I'm requesting that we have a joint work session on November 13th. It would follow the Public Utilities Commission meeting, which is at 4:45. So, it would, I would say it's gonna be about 5:15, between 5:15 and 5:30 that we would actually have that meeting.
I don't.
I can't be there.
What's that?
I won't be able to be in town.
You won't? What about everybody else? What is, what are your thoughts?
I should be able to make that. 13th, so it'd be the second Monday of the month.
Doubt it.
Making work?
Then I will.
Do you know how long it will last?
Depends on how, how long the discussion is, you know what I'm saying? So I think it just depends on, we have lots of topics to cover, but we could get through them relatively quickly, or, you know, if there's certain items that you guys feel strong about, and I just want to make sure that we talk about them. And I did send an email to the PUC as well. I have not heard back from them, but I will reach out to them tomorrow. I mean, they're gonna be here anyway, so, but still, they might not want to stay, so. And, you know, what's interesting, because a lot of times, you know, we talk about, well, it's kind of like, they make the decisions on the public work side, some of the public work side then, we make decisions for everything else. But it really has to kind of come together if we're gonna make it work, and so, whatever we do for one, we kind of have to do for the other. And I will tell you that SOX contracts are getting settled in '24, and always, whenever local communities around the areas' contracts get settled, that always is interesting for us. Ours doesn't come until '25, so that'll be the first year of the new contract. So, that's where I'm at. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, I have, and council members, I have nothing else. Thank you.
While we're on to action items, so, one sad action item is, Street Parks Supervisor Gary Minton Dorff has given his notice of retirement, effective February 29th, 2024. Mr. Minton Dorff has worked for his city for over 40 years, and I'd like to say you've done a lot of great things for our community, Gary. You are gonna be severely missed, and everything you do, it'll go above and beyond what you do. It probably is gonna be hard to be replaced. So for that, I really thank you for everything you've done for our community and going above and beyond. Thank you so much. So we're looking for an action item to give consideration, authorizing staff to advertise for the position. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
On my favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Thanks again, Gary, for everything.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
All right, new business. Notice of appointments. It's all in there for that again. Okay, Planning and Zoning Commission, there's three members for four-year terms expiring. And there is one for Melrose Housing Redevelopment Authority, one member for five, for five-year terms, five-year term. So if anybody is interested, you can go to the city's webpage, right? And we should have applications on there, right?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Our favorite subject that.
Yep, no, no problem, but at least with, with this here, if you'd like to apply for those, just make sure you go to city's webpage or stop in, visit. They will give you copies for an application, and like, ask people if they love to help serve their community, this would be a great way to do it. So we're on old business then, cannabis. Scott, are you gonna talk about that? Again?
Nothing has changed. You've talked to the council about the idea of, rather than just relying on the county ordinance regarding public use, adopting the city ordinance. The proposed ordinance and a lot of the, and I think the samples that you were provided pretty much track the counties. It would just, you know, put, you'd have your own law on the books. If you wish to pursue this, the next step would be to have a public hearing and let the public weigh in what they think about public use of marijuana, vaping products, before you would decide what, what the final ordinance would be. There's a hearing staff. It's like the recommendation, just the next council, either be a public hearing.
Do we have to have a public hearing to pass an ordinance like that? But I thought just a couple months ago, we were gonna pass an ordinance about regulating vacant buildings, and we did not have to have a, or did the public, or did Planning and Zoning have a public hearing in that? Or, we didn't, we didn't have to have a public hearing in that one?
For the regulation of vacant buildings, we did not. I think that the council just decided they weren't gonna pursue it. Like I said, there's, whenever the council feels like a public hearing would be useful to gather information on a topic, they can ask for a public hearing. There are places in state statute where you must have a public hearing before you act. I think the, you know, most common one is, you know, if you're going to have special assessments, you know, for improvements, you have to have a public hearing. There are some instances where you need a public hearing to amend, you know, certain parts of the zoning ordinance, but typically, you know, that public hearing would be before Planning and Zoning, and then they make a recommendation in the council. This is one where the, the state has decided that, yes, you can regulate public use, but before you do that, you need to have a public hearing. Don't ask me why.
But this is more for where people can use it, not selling it. Is that correct?
Right. It's, it would be restricting where they can use it. So, right now, with someone, well, before the county had their ordinance in place, you know, the state statutes approved the use, and in theory, someone could be walking down the sidewalk on Main Street, you know, smoking. And there was nothing on the books that said that. So like I said, we've talked about it month and year, for several months. County's gonna have them adopt their own ordinance, which would, you know, would apply. Then the question, do we want to have our own city ordinance? Which would then be the, you'd have the, if it was the county ordinance, they'd get a tag, and for the court, if it's the city ordinance, you'd have the opportunity to treat it as a, as just a pay, administrative fine.
Should we set the fines first and then figure out? Administrative fines first?
No, I definitely think we should set up a public hearing for next month. Do we, do we have a rough timeframe when we decide about license? Is that still looking a year away yet?
Yeah, well, we don't get to decide about licenses. The, the state issues the licenses. Our, our involvement is, is more of a, someone applies to the state for a license, and we do a, a check, you know, and it comes down to, like, the zoning check. I don't even know if there's a background check, I'd have to go back now. So we, and we get to charge a fee for doing, you know, this background check and zoning check, and issue a report, either saying, yeah, this is eligible, under our local rules, or, you know, it's not, but the license itself is issued by the state.
So we can't do like with a liquor license, now we can only, you know, give out six?
But we can't.
Yeah.
You know, limit the number of licenses. And the other thing we can do through the zoning is, you know, looking through the different types of businesses, they'll be licensing and try to restrict where. You know, if they come up with a proposal for a building, or as a site, it's like, okay, yeah, you can do it, but you've gotta be in this district. We can't. And, and as part of the zoning restrictions, you could put, you know, similar to like, you could say, well, you can't be within so many feet of schools and parks. So there, there's some restrictions we could put on the location, and we could put some restrictions on the number, after letting at least one in.
Even if it's a municipality? I am still serious that we should consider that.
We could look into that, it's, it's a, it's a possibility.
I do want us to at least look into it. I've mentioned it before, and I think we should at least consider it.
It could be the one. I'd like to see how the banking stuff works on, and that's the part that I've always heard is a problem for all of these businesses, is that they're, because the federal government says it's illegal, it's hard to set up the accounts that you would normally have for a business, or, like, if it's just a line in the general fund. If it's just a line in the general fund, I'd...
Okay.
Maybe we have to look into it. You could have it as a municipal.
There, I spoke my piece enough on that one.
That's kind of coming down the road, and I think, you know, if they'll do it nicely, we could work around the contract, and just that they didn't, you know, take that into consideration, and then come back with some changes to the zoning ordinance addressing it before the state is ready to do their licenses. But last I heard, they don't think they got a mission from the city office yet. They had one for a day.
Decided not to follow the law on our own business, huh?
So, I'm assuming there'd be a big announcement if they found the law.
Yep. All right.
That's an action, so just to set the hearing.
Yes, Scott, can I get a motion to set a meeting for November sixteen, twenty twenty-three?
I have a motion.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Thanks, Scott. Staff is looking to set up a special meeting to conduct a final review of the 2024 Budget Capital Improvement Plan, so for, uh, November sixteenth at five PM. Are we all good with that? Any questions? All right. Uh, Local Road Improvement Program Resolution Number 2023 dash sixty-two, resolution supporting a local road improvement program application for Melrose project. So, that would be Main Street West, right?
Yes. This is for the Main Street project. Tomorrow morning, the Stearns County Commissioners will hopefully be passing their resolution in support of our application for MinDOT's Local Road Improvement Program for Main Street. It's a state grant program supporting local transportation. We need Stearns County to be our sponsor because we're considered a small city, so it's a pass-through grant. We would use this application for the street portion of Main Street. It cannot be used for utilities, so we cannot use it for the electric water or sewer portion of Main Street, just the streets and stormwater. Um, it's up to one point five million dollars is the most you can ask for in any single project. And the criteria that, uh, we're applying for under is that it is a road of regional significance, and so that's the case that I'm making in the grant application. And so, we would ask council support to consider the resolution. I may be back next month for another resolution. Um, Melrose Township is reaching out to us for a joint application to, they're considering finishing Railroad and the bypass, and that would be a joint app because we've got about this much road left that we have to finish. So, we're working with the township supervisors on that. But this resolution tonight is only concerning Main Street.
All right. So, that would be, uh, also to give a consideration of Resolution Number 2023 dash sixty-two, resolution supporting local road improvement program application on Main Street project. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Say it.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Information items, uh, Utility Commission meeting minutes on September eleventh. If there's nothing else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
All right. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Meeting adjourned.